I'm a member of the American Association of University Women. This evening's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters and the American Association of University Women. Established in 1919, the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters welcomes both female and male members. The American Association of University Women has been empowering women as individuals and as a community since 1881. For more than 130 years, its members have worked together at a national grassroots organization to improve the lives of millions of women and their families. A big thank you to the city of Alexandria for allowing us to conduct this forum in their council chambers. Our forum moderator this evening is League of Women Voters member Ken Hall. Ken is a retired businessman and has lived in Alexandria since 1972. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Georgia. Is this mic on? Can you hear me okay? Good. Yes, I am the moderator for tonight. Those of you who have come to all forums are probably getting sick of seeing me. Forward anyway.
Thanks, you don't have to ready for this.
The format tonight is very simple. We will begin with two-minute introductions by each candidate, followed by questions submitted by the audience or over email. Our forum is scheduled for 60 minutes. To submit a question, please see one of the folks here. We have cards and pens. Bring them forward to our two screeners, Andy and Diane, both are members of Alexandria League of Women Voters. They will make sure the questions are relevant to the office, are not repetitious, and are not personal attacks. Please try to make your questions short and to the point while avoiding simple yes-or-no answers. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a question submitted. We will allow 90 seconds for those answers, and we will allow rebuttals. Our timers Kathy and Sue are going to tell them when they are ready to... and maybe it's just Kathy. Sue's already failed. Kathy is our timer then. We will have a one closing statement at the end of the questions. Let's make sure that our cellphones are turned off. Make sure that you don't have any cameras out to take unauthorized photos. We are videoing this forum, and audio recording will not be allowed as well. So at this time, we're going to have our candidates introduce themselves in alphabetical order. Bob, if you'd like to start for two minutes?
Good evening, and welcome everybody to our city council. I'd like to see more of you, um, regular council meetings and give your opinions. Introduce myself. I've been in Alexandria for the past 37 years. I came up here, I bought the old Viking motel and Viking apartments, and I've been in business here ever since. I still own an apartment building, and I also have a luer cannon spa. Before I came up here, I was in the US Navy for four years, active duty, and then I did eight years inactive, or reservist. And I've been married to my wife, I met her up here in 91, we got married up here, so I've been married 27 years last month. I've been on council for now the past four years. I'm a strong believer in people's voice. Even though it may waver from what my opinion is, my job is to do what the people's voice is, not my own personal opinion. I just like to say I stand up for the people.
Thank you. Roger?
Hey, well, I'd like to thank our sponsors for putting this on tonight, and also thank Ken for being the moderator on this. I've been married for, my wife Carol, for 52 years. We raised two children in town here, and they're both married, and they each have a son, so we are grandparents of a 10-year-old and a 2-year-old. Retired about nine years ago after working 45 years with the telephone company. In that time, I managed about 21 people and was responsible for about 27 different towns. Had a lot of training in there as far as how to work on self-managed work teams, how to run meetings, to have team groups work as consensus, a lot of different things in that order, which I think all helps in a public process. Was on the township for about 11 years, and then got annexed into the city shortly after that, so a position opened up on council, so I had to apply for that along with six, seven other people, and council chose me to fill out those two years. Since that time, I've been appointed by the council to serve on HRA board, on the planning commission, the charter commission, and also represent the city on ALASD. I'm also a chairperson on that committee. I belong first with the church and on building committee, and we're in the process of putting up a $9 million project there. I also serve on the loving board, and then in any spare time I have left, I do wood carving. So I think I'm qualified to serve on the city council, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Roger. The first question we have comes from our friends at the Apple Press, and the question reads as such: "13 Minnesota cities have enacted laws raising the age to buy tobacco products to 21. Would you support the tobacco 21 policy in Alexandria? Why or why not?" Bob, let me begin with you.
I would support the 21 law because I'm being an ex-smoker, and I smoked for 20 years, and it was one of the toughest things I ever had to do to quit. And what made me start is when I was on the Navy, we would be at smoke breaks and boot camp, but if you didn't smoke, you didn't get a break, so then they kind of pushed you into smoking, and I smoked for 20 years. I tried to quit over 10 times, and finally the last one, and I believe I have quit. It's been 27 years, but I always say I'm like an ex-alcoholic. You know, if you have that one cigarette back, I'll be right back building myself back up smoking. But I think it's kind of tough for an 18-year-old because he's a lot of peer pressure to start smoking. And I've been really against finding some of the tobacco, or places selling tobacco to even minors under 18, when I know how difficult it is to try and quit and make that their hook. I don't want to see this dude go through that again. Pretty much where I stand.
Roger?
That's a tough question, and it's going to be a controversial issue, I suspect, too. Right off the top of my mind, I don't have any one way or the other, but I believe in fact-based decisions. So one of the things I need to do is I want to hear from the health departments, I want to hear from the different environments, and hear the whole story behind what's happening on there. It, I'm sure we're going to be a lot of hearings on it, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of letters on it and everything else, but you need to rely on the facts and what the facts tell you off of that and go from there. And it's one of these times it's going to be a tough decision. You take enemies whether you go, yes, or you don't know, but I'll make my decision based on what the facts show.
Let me add another question to that, this is a follow-up as well. This is on tobacco, and we'll start with you again, Bob, let us. Would you include e-cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, in the same issue of banning below age 21?
Yes, I have been endorsed, or endorsed at the 18 for the e-tobacco. I've known quite a few people that have tried to quit with the e-tobacco, and they start losing their voice. There's something wrong with it, there's a coke inside the product that you're smoking, which is an antifreeze, which antifreeze is poison. So I would support the e-tobacco the same way.
Roger, how about you?
I know there's been some discussion on that on council, so I'm not up to date on everything on that. I'd have to, again, hear some more information on it. My feeling at this point is that if it's a tobacco product, it would be the same way off of it. But again, I don't know enough about that subject to just give a straight answer off of it.
Okay, thank you. Roger, this question begins with you. Question is, why are you running? And the second part of that is, what personal traits do you have that would make you a good city council member?
Well, I like serving people. I've been, look at it, say, I almost served my entire life. I served quite a few years as, I didn't serve, but I was on 4H, and one of the models on 4H is to serve. I was in the telephone company, and we provide service, so it's been, served there too with it. It's in the township, we serve, so I enjoy that part of it. I enjoy serving the public. Feel my qualifications are as I relate the training I had at work. Council's no different than a workforce. If you've got a group of people together, you need to learn how to work together, you need to find out how to reach consensus, and all of this is what I've had training on, and I think I could bring that to the city council here. It's also something that I enjoy doing. My dad, he was on a, was in Carter County, but he was county commissioner for a number of years, so I knew all the history and what happened. When I got on the town board at first, I wasn't going to, but my wife said, you know, you've got all this training, use it. So that's what I've been doing, and I hope to serve again.
Thank you. Bob, same question?
Originally, I had never thought of being on council, ever. And I had four people come up to me and ask me, run where I live and run. I said, who, me? But they seen something in me that I didn't see in myself, that I stood up for people when nobody else would. I look back at my life, I've done before in high school, I've done in the service, I stood up to the officers, there were charges, I mean, one, I gave one situation where guys went down alone, they had the paper, and I said, they come up and said it was too toxic, they hired, and I said, I went down and checked, and it was, it was way too strong for us, so I let them go home for days. The officer in charge of me come back and told me, get that people back down and paid it. And I stood up and I said, did you want paid? You go down and pay it because my guys aren't going down there until it's aired up. I didn't think of that, that I was being able to stand up for other people, but now I look back, I see I do. I was on the Chamber of Commerce, and I was invited one time to come down to a marketing committee meeting, just to get my input. I said, I knew I was on the marketing committee, I was on the Resorts Visitor Bureau, I was on, what do you call it, the visitor's guide, I was chairman of the visitor's guide for like three or four years, I was back in the 80s, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Bob, the next question starts with you. What are the biggest challenges the city will face now and in the next 10 years?
One is the continuous growth, let's say. I believe we're, eventually we're going to be the next same club, we're the next mayor or not. The annexation was a lot of fight against it, the annexation, but I believe it was a good thing because it brought our population up, and we can bring more people in town for industry and good jobs for people. I know the crime rate comes with it, but I hope we can keep that down, and I think our police department's been very, doing very well at that. And always good fighting for, to get LGA up, to help get our roads better. I'm all in favor of doing our roads and getting them back up in shape. I'm not in favor of borrowing us a huge debt and making up the roads. I figured last year we didn't borrow the $2.4 million to do all the roads. I had proposed that we do only a few of them, get them done at our average dollar we have on hand, and I wrote my figure, if we would borrow the $2.4 million, we would spend over $40,000, or $40,000 in interest alone on that, and then our debt would be for many years to come.
Same question, Rick? Could you repeat it again?
Sure. The question is, what are the biggest challenges the city will face now and in the next 10 years?
Okay, that's a great question, I think, because right now, I don't realize it, but as you talk to people, homelessness is a big issue in town here. We also have a big issue with lack of workforce housing. Think homelessness is something the churches are looking at, working together and working with some nonprofits, maybe to go with that. Workforce housing is another issue. It's that 180, $200,000 homes that's tough to find, and as soon as they are on market, it's sold immediately. I serve on HRA, and that's housing we put in that area, and in some cases, we've got the house sold before we even start to build it yet. So those are two immediate issues. If we look more long-range, we're going to continue to have safety issues, and safety as far as walking paths. City had, as Bob mentioned, annexed an area again, which was great, but they didn't bring sidewalks and this type of thing to it. Notice down by Casey's, my wife and I were driving by there the other day, you've got about a two-foot walking area, there was a person with a white cane trying to walk on there, and you almost know somebody was killed there, too. So I think safety is going to be a huge issue presently and in the future.
Thank you. Roger, the next question goes to you, and Bob has kind of touched on this already, so we'll follow up with this. What do you want to do about fixing our roads? How would you finance all of the road needs?
When I was on the township, road maintenance was the highest item we had. In the city, road maintenance is the issue, too. I think you need to have a five-year, 10-year, and a 20-year plan on roads. You know, Tim Schonhoven does a great job here of identifying the roads, putting in, you know, you can go with an overlay for a while, and if you let that go long enough, you're going to have to go to a rebuild. And dollars are astronomical what it costs on a rebuild, and you can get by with just an overlay, and you can do patchwork. So you really have to plan on that. Tim Schonhoven, as I've been listening to meetings, too, is a member of a lot of different organizations, so he finds out when there's grants and stuff available from the state, and he has a plan put together so when grant is available, the city could immediately put their plan out there and get the money for it. I don't have the numbers here, but I know we've saved hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in the city because of grants, because of Tim's work could get by. So road maintenance is critical, but you've got to have a plan, and you have to have it out a long time, so then stick to it.
Thank you. Bob, do I expand on that?
Yeah, I agree with you both, Roger, but Tim has a good plan ahead. We've got four different priorities on our roads right now, and we have quite a few that we have to rebuild. And those are the ones that, I'm sorry, you're going to take a while without borrowing a lot of money, because otherwise, to get all of them done, we will have to borrow, according to Tim, will be $2.2 million. And there, again, we're going to be in debt for 20 years, which would have to bring our taxes up, and nobody likes their taxes up. So I have proposed to take the worst ones we can and do it with what dollars we have, and keep doing our milling overlays of the roads so those don't go bad, and take small sections at a time and get them rehab, the roads totally done. He's got a good plan on it, and we just went through it, what was that, three days, four days ago, on the budget? And covered the whole plan, it's going to be like $2.2 million, but if we just do the rehab, if we did all the one priority, one roads, it would only be like $1.2 million. That's still what we have to bond and do that to keep our budget check. But we could probably take three or four of them roads and get them done. One of them would be Deerwood, which has been a dirt road.
Roger?
It is a big comment, Bob comments there with it. I agree with him, you don't want to bury yourself in debt, but at the same time, if you let the road go, if it's too bad, they get into a rebuild, and that costs a lot more. If you bond for the road, now, you don't pay any money that first year that you bond, and then you pay it down the line, and you take your bond out for 15 or 20 years, but you have new people moving into your area, then that also helps pick up the tab on that, so it isn't just existing, right where you take it from our budget, it's existing people have to pay for it. So if you bond, you have new people coming in, too, so I think that's another way to look at it, but the roads have got to take a priority.
I do agree with what I said, we will still complete our milling overlays, so those roads don't go bad to a total rehab. It's just the ones I talked about, total rehab, that we have to, we've got to get the worst ones done first. And some of them may be last another year or two, so we could put them off for a little while, and at least patch them up, and not spend all that extra money on the bond.
Thank you. Bob, this question begins with you. What are your thoughts regarding amending the city charter?
We went through the charter, just put it all on, Roger's on the charter commission, and they have proposed many charter amendments to us, and some of them failed, I just wanted to vote. I had a motion before one time on council, because there was negative on that they didn't get through, and I said, there's small changes on the charter? And I said, put it to people, put it to referendum. Let the people make the decision for us. If we can't do a full vote on ourselves to do it, the charter was originally put together by the people, so let the people make a decision for the changes and tell us how to run our city.
Roger?
And Bob and I have a different view on that point, obviously. The charter was put together by the people, but I've been on the charter commission for four years, we've just been trying to bring the charter up to how the city is operating. We're not trying to make any changes on it, it's just how the city is operating. As an example, the state statute changed the term of, originally in the charter, the councilman, the mayor served two-years term. State statute changed the term for council to go to four-years, but it didn't touch the mayor. So 20, 25 years ago, when council made that change, they also changed the mayor to a four-year. So we, as the charter commission, have been trying to change, to change the charter to a four-year, but it gets voted down because they, one or two people feel it shouldn't be, it should be a two-year term, too. We've been trying to get Robert's Rules of Order, current issue on that, and that's failed, too. What's, the things that are being changed are not public affecting, these are strictly for the council. So to try to, if we can't convince five people on a council to do it, how are you going to convince 15,000 people to, if you want to do it? This is very simple on the charter, we're just trying to change it to how the city operates today.
Thank you. Roger's next, Bob and I'll first start.
Yeah, I got to say, I was one who was against the Robert's Rules of Order because the way it was written, it says, Robert's Rules or any other rules that may come about. That means we can go back to like China, Iran, where you're throwing a shoe at your opponent. I don't want to leave that open. I like Robert's Rules of Order, and I believe it should be followed, but I think small changes could be made and have to be re-voted on every year.
Bob, as far as throwing a shoe with each other, I'd have to say, come on, man.
That's not going to happen. If the verbiage that was put in there was, at the beginning of each year, the city council passes some rules, so the verbiage was put in, Robert's Rules of Order or other rules passed by city council. That doesn't seem that complicated.
Roger, the next question begins with you, and kind of follows up on your last statement about throwing shoes. The city council meetings at times have been very, or somewhat contentious. What would you recommend to conduct city council business in a more civil manner?
Wow. Well, I think this is where the training I've had is how to work with small teams, how to work with groups. I think as we talk about consensus is, too often you look at voting, you've got winners, you've got losers. When you have consensus, you work with people to find out, you don't necessarily agree with all, but you can live with this. I think this is what you all have to try to realize when you're, you're serving people, you're not serving your own interests. So you need to look at what's best for the public on that, and what's best for the people. I think if you just sit down and discuss it, too often, I think our, at least in the council sessions here, you know, decisions are being made, but public doesn't hear what's all being said behind closed doors. They have a work session beforehand, and yes, it's an open meeting, but it's in a room over there, and the door on the outside says meeting in progress, so it's, it is an open meeting that's closed, and we aren't, public doesn't hear what the discussion goes on, and maybe if that were all done out in the public at council meeting, it would be, people would be less irritated with it, and things would come up in the open more.
Same question, Bob?
Yeah, I firmly believe in it. You can come to the meeting, you've read your homework, done your homework, you can get a basic decision on it, but you've got to be open-minded to somebody else's opinion because it might not be what you thought of. So you've got to be open-minded enough to be able to change, and there's no need to fight over it. You don't need to fight it. You can have an open discussion back and forth and make a good decision, no arguments have because it took five of us to vote. At least if each person on the council, we have open-minded to listen to the other person.
Thank you. Bob, this question begins with you. One of the most important pieces of work that the city administration does is to put together the budget. What do you see as the most important areas of the budget?
I think the budget as a whole is important. One, we've been talking about our streets and trying to keep the taxes down, and I know it was put in paper, and they were right that we had raised our levy by 4.7%. I was on the budget committee then. And they're right, it was raised at 4.7%. Our levy, but our actual taxes, because our tax capacity went up, that's every homeowner, so every new building we got in, every new property owner, the tax capacity went up, so that year, taxes for the city is actually going down by a half a percent. There's, our roads are a big thing on the budget that we have to take care of. I would say roads are more than parks. While parks are needed, we should take care of the roads first before we take care of the roads. Same with our police department. That is one of the most important things we have on here between the police and fire because they can save property and save lives.
Roger, same question?
Steve?
I alluded to it a little bit ago, too, and I think safety is a huge item, and that safety not only refers to pedestrian safety on here, but that brings in the police department and the fire department. Those are all large numbers on the budget. We need to continue to support that, we need to continue to look for better ways in which we can do that. We've got, I feel, one of the best fire departments around the area, and same with the police department. Bob says the road maintenance, and that's absolutely, because I said, that's a township's major issue, that's a city's major issue, even as you drive on other communities you see. So I think the two largest issues are, it's the safety, which includes police department, fire departments, sidewalks, curb runners, all of this for safe streets for children to get to school on. It's all critical, and as well as roads.
Thank you. Roger, this question begins with you. Is further annexation a necessary policy of the Alexandria roads? Why or why not?
Why are you asking me that? I live in the city here. You know, that's a good point, it's a good question, and, you know, I can't give you an answer on that. It's a policy on the city, with my understanding, is the annex by petition, so people will petition to come in. So people will petition to come in and do it. But as Bob alluded to too, that annexation brings a whole gamut of other problems. Because in annexation, a lot of times the main driver on that is Senator Sura. That's not the case here because the city doesn't have their own sewer system. So the only thing the city offers with annexation is water. But putting in water lines is a huge expense. And getting the power again, ALP serves outside the city too. So that's not it. So the only thing the city really offers with, with annexation is police protection in a sense. But the county and police work together hand in hand too, so both respond to it. But, but water is, is the main thing and it's expensive to annex. So you really need to have some good strong reasons for it. If there's, septic systems are failing and the sewers aren't, it's a separate issue there.
Thank you. Bob, same question?
Annexation, I, I believe we need to annex. But if the people want to join us, not by force, it's better if they join in with us. The last annexation that we had was Alec Township. And I think that was a great deal for Alec Township, but it wasn't so good for the city. Because in 2019 is the first year that the city gets all the property taxes for the city's portion. Where Alec Township was getting a portion of them property taxes every year until this year, until 2019. And I think that was a bad deal for the city. It was great for Alec Township because they got the money. They could use it for the rest of their township, but they couldn't use it in the city.
Roger?
It wasn't a great thing for Alec Township. Let's go back to it. Alec Township was held hostage at the time. The deal was either you annex the city into the city or we'll pull fire protection from you. So Alec Township at the time had to work with Carter's Township. They worked with Mosekis and to get this in the meantime. So, so they're saying it was bad for the city. The city is what pushed it. It wasn't the township that pushed it. So it wasn't good for the township. The township lost about half of its population base off of it.
Thank you. The next question begins with Bob. The city is part of a shared agreement for Lake's community recreation. Do you support youth community recreation in general? And what role do you feel the city has in financing it?
Well, that's a good one because I'm on the LAR board. I believe we need to take care of the kids that can't afford to go to baseball or go to football. And LAR is a very good resource. We have issues with the way LAR is being run. And I'm not in favor of withdrawing from the LAR as if it could reorganize and make the LAR go better. I believe we need to do it for the kids that can't afford it. If you can't afford hockey, they could go at least go to football. Or they, we get swimming lessons where they get, or kids get reduced grade because of the school lunch program. They get a reduced grade for it. LAR takes care of our swim beaches for us, we do all lifeguards. So I'm a firm believer in the LAR. Maybe we need a little reorganization in it, but I'm a strong believer in LAR.
Roger?
I'm not aware of what the issues are with LAR. LAR in itself, I think, is an absolute must. We've got the YMCA, but they're charged a lot more than what Lake City wrecked. Youth are our lifeblood. I mean, if you look at the churches too, this is one of the reasons why we're adding on to our churches because the youth, cities are no different. The youth is what brings people into the community. With all the youth activities we have going on, with the hockey going on, it's thousands and thousands of dollars that are being brought into the city. LAR has its place too. It's, they make it affordable for, for other people. It's being split up, you know, between townships, depending how far you live, all of it, including the city on it. So there definitely is a need for it and I'm strongly against getting rid of it. But I'm not, I make my decisions on facts and I don't have the facts like Bob does on to know what the issue are with the way they're running. But I'm in favor, in favor of Lake City.
That's one that really pulled me out.
Thank you. Roger, the next question begins with you. Should the city make building codes compatible with county ordinances to reduce the conflicts for people building homes? I guess the first question would be, in my mind, because I don't know the answer to this. Are they not compatible?
Could I ask that too? I don't know what, I don't know. I can speak as far as building codes are, are concerned. It, the building codes are definitely necessary. You, any, if you talk to any reliable builder and, and they agree with it too. They're taking shortcuts. A homeowner buys a house, you're expecting everything is going to be perfect. And then you start having problems because there were shortcuts done. We need to have building codes. I'd assume they would be the same as a county and, but I don't know that. But I guess my feeling is there too without, I like to give reasons or hear reasons why they aren't the same. You would think you would want to have everything the same because otherwise builders, are you in the city, are you in the county, where are you at? Builders get confused, homeowners get confused. I would think you would want to have the same, but I don't know what the facts are based on that.
Bob?
Our state building code is for the entire state. It's a matter of enforcement. We as a city, we have, we enforce our state building codes. There is another building code addition to there where it's, the state building code says, you have to sprinkler a building if it's over nine thousand square feet. The adoptive part that you're going to do is you can reduce that down to two thousand square feet and you would have to put a sprinkler system. I've been against that adoptive part because it's a burden on people building garages, storage buildings. Also some small businesses coming in. Most of your big businesses started somewhere small. If you look at Haysville Central, they started their ship and look at the building they have out there now. So eventually they will have to sprinkler the building when they get over that limit. But at least for a startup cost, because a sprinkler system, a seventy-five hundred square foot building, the cost to build it, at least thirty thousand dollars. That's a big added expense. So, but I do believe in the state building code and it's out there for the whole state. It's just a matter of enforcement. The county doesn't have an enforcement process on it, the, all of the building codes, which I hope they will eventually.
Governor?
Bob brought up the sprinkler system. And that's a good point. I haven't been on council too long and I know they've had a lot of discussion on it there. It's my understanding from my whoever on there that you either have to accept the whole sprinkler code or you get rid of it. You can't take bits or pieces off of it. It would seem to me it'd be better if we could. But it doesn't make sense that, as Bob said, on a small places like this, because we have, then you're putting up a shed right, or trying to do an attachment such as, our decisions onto it and they're unable to because of costs. Big buildings are going to do it anyway because it's cheaper for them to have sprinklers into them because you have, otherwise you have to put firewalls. So that's a tough one. It's, it's, it's hard to go on.
The standard building code is at nine thousand square feet. Anything over nine thousand in the whole state, ask a sprinkler. The adoptive part of code is added on to it and we have to take that whole add-on. And not just say, the sprinklers we take all of our, we have to take that whole adoptive portion. And that's the one I had proposed ahead, remove that adoptive portion and still keep the nine thousand square foot.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next question goes to you, Bob. The city of Alexandria is going through a revision of the comprehensive plan. What would you like to see incorporated in that plan?
The comprehensive plan, I would, I helped work with that comprehensive plan and I think the whole plan is a good idea. I don't think one part is more important to the other. One is transparency though. Everybody should know what we're doing on council. And I believe in keeping my door open. If a citizen has a question, I'm willing to answer it if I can. I'm not always going to have the right answers, but I'll try to do my best.
Roger?
I've sat in on a few of the meetings with the comprehensive plan and the city has to have a comprehensive plan. And you need to keep it up, keep it updated because that's what you work for. The present plan that I would like to see on it is the fact the city's role at this point is not to build the streets. The developer puts the streets in. Well, part of the comprehensive plan is putting Eighteenth in. The plan is for Eighteenth to go all the way through to Rosewood. But we have Johnson's property in between there and where First Lutheran Church is going to be, that section of road until that gets developed isn't, doesn't exist. So the plan put in Eighteenth, which is going to start next year is my understanding for Eighteenth, isn't going to serve what the plan says. To me, I think the city should build the streets. We've just got a new director out at, at the Surday Street and he came from Detroit Lakes. And Detroit Lakes, the city builds them and you assess or put them on property taxes. But I think it, it, it screws up the comprehensive plan. I think the city should on those, put the streets in and find some way to help the landlords out to, to cover the cost. But I think if it's a comprehensive plan, the street should go in better.
Bob?
With the streets and stuff, the developer does have to put the street in. Right now between Rosewood and the bypass, they're putting a road in. And that developer's building a ninety-four year apartment building in there. And he applied for TIF. I'm sure certainly with what TIF is tax income on financing. They get a big portion of their taxes back when they're paid in a year. And I agreed on that TIF for that property because they're going to put a road in, Rosewood Lane and the bypass. They're going to do it to city standards, the curb, gutter and sidewalk. And that's the reason I agreed on the TIF for that property. So on fifteen years, the developer will get that money back and he made it in for that road. And the city don't have to put the money out. We can follow that away.
Thank you. Roger, the next question begins with you. Do you support the expansion of the Ruins Dock Community Center with a third sheet of ice? Should the city continue to pursue state funds for that purpose? Why or why not? And the final part of this question is how, how should the city deal with the potential loss of ice time revenue from competition at the North Star Christian Academy?
Starting on the backside and working forward is, I don't know if there's any lost time because it's my understanding there, everybody wanting to use ice couldn't use the ice because there wasn't enough ice. With North Star coming in here now, I know they booked, that they haven't been able to use it before. They booked time out there. And I've talked to some parents whose kids now can practice in at, at six, seven o'clock at night instead of times they should be in bed. So I'm not sure if there's a loss of revenue to the RCC because of that or not. I'm going back to the RCC on there. The, the city should definitely be involved. How they should be involved, I don't know for sure either. Again, without being into the discussions of it. But it brings a lot of money into the community. The hotels are, and the restaurants, the shopping. It's, it's a big money revenue for the, for the city. So I think the, the city needs to be involved in some type of partnership with it. And that's where the partnership's coming in. Partner with the county off of it even on something like that. Townships look at partnering on these, go for the state fund, state aid. So I think there's ways to do it. But I'm definitely in favor of the RCC and I think there are ways for the city to become involved with that.
Bob?
At the RCC, we did an energy savings plan. We changed the whole city to LED lights to save energy. And we did the west brink where they couldn't have summer ice because of permafrost. So part of that energy savings that we used is we tore the whole floor out of the west brink. And we did it, so now we have gained some ice time so they can have summer ice all the time. We also bought a floor covered for the rink. And it takes only four or five hours to change it from ice to a dry floor and vice versa because the ice is still there. And it's pretty easily, instead of taking four days to change, to melt down the ice and put new on, they can do it within a day. So they, we have gained some ice time. If we get the state grant or the RCC, I would be possibly in favor of it. But the, the interest groups have to raise some funding also. I think the lady said it, the city has to raise three million dollars for a nine million dollar project. So that's a tough one to go on because that's not for the average kids out there. But I think if we can come up with that with raising the funds and focus groups and the grant, I could possibly report. I'd have to see that.
Roger?
Yeah, I think that's, I heard a little bit about it, but I know that the turnover time was two to three days before they put the new ice in for changing events. And so I think this is where the city was, and the RCC are spending their money wisely on it by changing to this type of system. I've been talking for half a day to change over to bring another event in. So this is the kind of thing that we're talking about. You know, look at ways in which we can spend money sensibly. And this is a prime example of it here.
Thank you. Since we're talking about grants, the next question, Bob, is for you. Hypothetical, if you received a million dollar grant to use for the city in any way that you wanted, what would you do with it if you wanted?
Trick or treat or talk.
Actually, if we could get a billion dollar grant to do anything in the city, I would repair the roads that have been hesitant to borrow money on. Stick it under them roads and get them to take care of it. So we can just get on a general building overlay program and keep the cost down and not have to raise high taxes.
Roger?
I'd have to agree with Bob on that. A million dollar, I mean, a million dollars doesn't go very far when you're fixing up the road and you're doing full rebuilds and everything. So definitely if, if that kind of money came in on a grant, roads would be the top of the list for it.
That billion dollars would take care of that all our priority one roads right now. I love it.
I think there's an agreement there. There is. No, we just need a million dollars.
Yep.
Next question goes to you. Some rental properties in the city have been the focus of police attention. Who should bear the responsibility for conduct in rental properties that results in excessive use of law enforcement resources?
Great, great question. I don't have the answer for it. You know, the city has, has rules and regulations set up and, and there's inspections and everything and conditional uses with that and they can be pulled if, if things aren't being met. So the police department is definitely where it goes for. But if the police department is continually going back, it's, it's, I don't have rental properties. I'm just not familiar with all the steps to go through. But I know there are inspections that need to be done and if they aren't being met, condition, these permits can be taken away from them.
Bob?
I believe I've got a real unfair opinion to you, Roger.
Yes.
Because I do have rental properties. And I, I strongly believe that the tenant that is causing a problem should be penalized. A landlord, if you're not familiar with landlords, we have some strict rules of what we can do, what we can't do. Trying to get rid of a tenant is very hard and costly. I have, I have a couple tenants that I, I'd love to get rid of right now. But I have to have a good reason to go down there. I can't just come in with a couple of police reports and say, they've come over for this. So you got to hold the party that's doing the problem responsible for their own actions. Landlords can't do a lot. I can, I can go over there and I can make threats and say, hey, you pull this one more time, you're out of here. But it doesn't go that easy. They stay in there and you'll have to take them to court. At least two weeks that you have to wait before you get up to court. Then the judge says, well, give them a month or two, give hours. Sometimes I'll even give them an extension, come back and see if they take care of it. So I've been, I'm sorry, I got the back end off of Roger.
Thank you, Bob. We're going to ask a question as a follow-up to one that was asked earlier concerning Lake's area recreation. You mentioned the word issues. Could you elaborate a little bit on the issues?
A lot of the issues we have is communication between the LAR and the joint powers. I don't know if you're familiar with LAR, it was kind of with Mr. Smith and possibly build a, a building and move in there. Communications was not good on that because supposedly that they were told, the county was told we were leaving in, in the first part of 2019 in their building. And I don't know how that come about because it'd be an indefinite possibility because we went with the building, we didn't with the grant. We won't come start construction until the beginning of 2019. So I think communication is one of the biggest issues there and not talking about the ideas that are coming across to all the, all stakeholders. They already want a comprehensive plan now and needs assessment to find out what we need in our community, say if we're missing pickle wall or missing that, maybe there's a need for it in the city. So that's what the survey is going out in this next two weeks, I think.
Roger, do you have any additional comment on that?
Well, I'm not aware of what the issues are, so I can't respond to that. But I can only say it's been my experience over the years that lack of communication leads to problems. One of the first step is we've got to communicate with the people involved on it. But in my training too, I've also had training on conflict resolution. And that's you get the parties together and there's different steps you can go through to help work this out with that. And there's different training methods and this type of thing to be used. So I don't believe that anything is hopeless. I think it, you get the people together, you talk, there are different ways to do it, to communicate and get to the bottom line of it. So I think it can be worked out.
Thank you. We're getting near the end here, so we have one final question. Begin with you, Roger. We have two questions that came in that basically are the same issue. So we'll ask both of them together. What can the city do to reduce storm water and salt pollution of our lakes? And the second part of that question is, is it true that many storm sewers in the city empty directly into the lakes?
Well, starting with the last one again, it's my understanding to go in the holding ponds first. I'm not aware there's any that goes straight into it. As far as what can the city do? A couple things on there. The main item is education. Is, public needs to be educated on what you should put down your storm sewers, what to put down your drain. Talking to employees out there, they're shocked sometimes and a list station has trouble, they go out there, they're finding big coveralls jammed up. And they're saying, we have no clue how they could even got them into the drain. But, but people put everything underneath the sun into the, into the drains. So education is part of it. And with the plan out there, it takes, does a good job of what it's designed to do, but everything else is a flow-through. So any pollution in the lakes, it's coming from us, the public. So I think we need an education of it, we need to unshore it, how to prevent erosion. We need to take a look on the fertilizer side of it. The other side is, is water softeners. I mean, water softeners are pumped straight into your groundwater. We lived in a town 50 years ago, the city softened the water. If the city softens the water here, we could eliminate all the water softeners. And waters, flowing from the city amounts to about 50% of the flow coming into the district. So 50% of the salt from the lake could be eliminated if we, major, like when a city softens, they don't use salt.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, one of the, if you're trying to over soften your water, Roger touched on that. If you try to over soften, you put more salt in the system than is necessary. And that would go into treatment plant has a harder time taking care of it. We do have the tanning ponds that we're putting in. The port goes into our lakes. Also, some of our storage centers have a reservoir that it goes in and a lot of the sediment goes to the bottom of it and the water comes off the top and help reduce some of that. Over fertilizing your lawns will also help put polvo into, it's nice to have a good green lawn, but if you overdo it, that runs off into the storm sewers and then runs into our lakes and causes weeds to grow and causes pollution in the lake. So if everybody is just more aware and cut back on some of the things that you try to overdo.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are going to end with a one-minute closing statement and Roger, you can start.
Okay, I think we've talked about it already here, but I think listening is a huge thing for any public position. Basic decisions on facts. Don't use your gut feeling. I saw a sign up once that said, "Facts keep interfering with my gut feeling." And we need to find facts on it. Sensible spending, we, we talked about that too. And RCC is an example of some sensible spending is changing the ice up over there. And the bottom line is even with the charter situation is to make tough decisions. That's why council's being paid for. We've got to make tough decisions off of that. And I just want to say, I think anytime you serve in the city council or you serve in the public office, it's a privilege. You know, it's not something that you take lightly. And to decide feel that I'm equipped to serve on the city council and I'd definitely like to represent Ward Two and closing and just say I'm Roger Thoman and I'm running for city council.
Thank you. Bob, one minute?
I agree with you mostly on all that, Roger. I guess couldn't say it better myself.
What am I doing?
But you always want to keep it open here and I've always done that for the citizens.
He does.
Like I said before, my, my, I might not always be right. What I hear from the people is where I really, I have to stand on it. Also have to protect the laws that we have. Sometimes I think of ideas that we can't do because of some law. So I learn about it and I open-minded and I'm willing to hear that and I'll have to stand behind it. Alls I can say is I'm happy to be a voice for the people and I've been happy for the past four years to be able to speak. I'm proud the people saw enough in me. So whether they vote me in or not, thanks for the last four years.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thanks for taking the opportunity to be a part of this forum and also your willingness to serve in our city government. Let's get these guys around. This session has been recorded and is available, will be available on our public access television channel locally. So please let those who couldn't come tonight and are interested, tell them that this is going to be available in a couple of days.